All right. Would you all please, first, good evening, welcome everyone. Please stand while we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Be up there, camera, that makes you feel better. Okay, so first we want to do the roll call. Okay, Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Quinn is absent this evening, Alderman Snyder.
Present.
Alderman Saunders. Alderman Simpson.
Present.
And Mr. Osborne.
Present.
Awesome. All right, we have a quorum. First on our agenda is to review and approve of the minutes of the September nineteenth twenty-four meeting that will be found under tab four, or five, four.
It's CCWWC, Jason, did, is that correct?
What?
On the vote on CCWWC.
Did I vote it now?
It says unanimous.
I voted no.
I thought you did.
Yeah, it doesn't specify.
So.
It says unanimous.
Can you approve these, can you approve the minutes with an addendum or is that not authorized? You can't? So.
We would have to make an edit and re-present them.
Okay. So, we'd, I would need a motion to postpone the approval of these meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to postpone the approval of the minutes until the corrections are made.
We have a motion on the floor to postpone approval of the minutes of the September nineteenth twenty-twenty-four board meeting. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second to postpone the approval of the meeting minutes from the September nineteenth twenty-twenty-four board meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. We'll get this on to the agenda for the next meeting. Good catch, everyone, thank you. On the mayor's report. We would like to proclaim in honor of direct support professionals, and I like to stay and do this. This is a proclamation in honor of direct support professionals, whereas direct support professionals are integral supporting individuals with disabilities, helping them to lead full, independent, and meaningful lives within their communities. And whereas DSPs, just direct support professionals, provide critical assistance in daily living activities, including personal care, health management, employment support, social engagement, and advocacy, ensuring that those they serve can achieve greater independence and inclusion. And whereas the dedication, skill, and compassion of direct support professionals enhance the quality of life for countless individuals and families, promoting dignity, respect, and opportunities for personal growth. And whereas DSPs work in a variety of settings such as residential homes, day programs, and community services, often under challenging conditions, and their commitment deserves recognition and appreciation. And whereas this profession requires significant knowledge, ethical practice, ongoing training, demonstrating the value and complexity of the work DSPs perform on a daily basis. And whereas the demand for highly qualified direct support professionals continues to grow, making it essential that we honor their contributions and advocates for policies that support adequate wages, benefits, and professional development opportunities for DSPs. And whereas it is fitting to recognize and celebrate the vital role of direct support professionals in empowering individuals with disabilities to live productive, self-determined lives. Now therefore, I, Ronald E. Melor, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of October seventh, twenty-twenty-four, as Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week, and encourage all citizens to join in celebrating the hard work, dedication, and the invaluable contributions of these professionals to our community. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Monroe City to be affixed on this third day of October, twenty-twenty-four. Okay, next thing we have is in your packet, you will have the building permits fee structure that has been updated. We are asking the board to review the fee structure and to approve the fee structure via motion.
I think I have some questions.
Absolutely, please.
I don't understand the water tap, the, I mean, it's a substantial increase. I don't know what goes into that, so it's hard for me to say that that's a.
George? We're discussing the fees, we had meetings with the department managers, we're discussing the fees. Would you mind coming up, please? And help Alderman Simpson.
Educate me.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the water tap fees, the proposed fees for that, and then, like, what is the main to meter? I don't, I don't understand what's involved in all that.
Okay, so the water tap, we have to dug down to the main, and there's a saddle put around the main. We drill through the main, and then we put copper from there to where the water meter sits in the customer's yard.
And then would that be during a new construction, or, I mean?
Any, any time that a water tap is needed, yes. It's normally new construction is where that happens, yes.
So they would pay this fee on top of the, are we keeping you up? I asked if we were keeping you up. So that would be in addition to the fee for new, I mean, there's a fee for a residential building fee. So we would do the resi, oh, that's.
Yeah, this would only pertain to water, not anything that there's.
But if there was a new construction on vacant lots.
Yeah, so then that would be, that's actually the cost of what it costs the city to purchase all the equipment that is required to get the water from the main to the water meter, yeah. And then the customer just hooks up to the other side of the water meter.
We've been losing money on those.
Yes.
A substantial amount every time we do it.
Well, why is one of them, like, the one inch, there's a fee, but at the two inch, it says at cost?
Because a two-inch water meter might, you might be able to put it in a plastic pit. You might have to get a concrete vault, it might actually go in the building. There's so many.
Too many variables.
Yeah, there's too many variables to put a number on it, where the one-inch and the three-quarter-inch water meter will always be in a meter pit outside in the city right.
When's the last time our fees were updated? Do you mind now?
We, say, say it again? We're, we, we're thinking probably prior to two thousand.
Yeah, so.
We don't know exactly, we don't know exactly.
And basically what we're trying to do here is adjust our fees to basically be at cost.
Yes, it's to cover your top.
We're not, we're not looking to necessarily make money, we just want to cover, cover our costs. And then, you know, as you can see on here, the headings that, we did a couple things. We tried to get some comparison to other, other communities that are very similar to us, and try to understand what their approach was. And then we had a meeting for all the managers, and we sat down, we talked about, okay, was it cost to do that? Was it costing us to do this? And I would have to suggest that, particularly on the water taps, that if the individual was required to contract that, purchase all of the components and pay for the labor to do it, it would be substantially higher. So they may not think that they're, that they're getting a bargain, if you will, but they are.
Yeah.
Okay, this is a gas question, and I just don't understand the term, thank you, George.
Oh, you bet.
On the gas installation, what is a fixed, what is fixed versus the main and all of that? On the standard three-quarter inch plastic, there's a line that says fixed.
Right, one is three and one is the three-quarter inch plastic main?
Yeah, I don't understand that term fixed. Oh, good, hi, Terry. What's fixed mean?
When we did, when we did these, basically, we had a fixed gas installation, standard three-quarter plastic of a hundred and fifty, and we took it out for one thousand dollars. She's asking, what is that? What does that mean?
That's, that's the cost that cost us to buy all the material now to put our gas service.
For a new, new.
For a whole new service.
Oh, I'm, I'm.
To a hundred feet long.
Fixed is the, that's the base cost, and then there's an adder of four dollars per foot.
So if they have to come in a hundred feet from the street?
That covers the hundred feet, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that comes up to a hundred.
On a three-quarter, yeah.
Okay, so on the plastic main, there's no charge?
Uh, we usually sidewell fuse and add on and stuff, so we can do that ourselves, but if we got to bring in a certified welder, that's going to add probably anywhere from twelve to sixteen hundred, depending on how fast we can get him there.
On the plastic?
No, no, on the steel.
No, I was talking about on this first line.
I'm just telling you that there's two different.
Right, I get that plastic and steel is totally different.
Yes.
I don't see one that doesn't show plastic on here.
Well, I don't know.
I don't see anything on every size plastic, you got the three-quarters, you got the one-inch, you got the two-inch. We removed one because we don't ever, we don't do one typically. We removed.
We don't do one inch anymore?
No, no. Try to eliminate that if you can.
And then you're going to have the two-inch for the industrial. And then the two-inch for the industrial.
Three-quarter inch high pressure will carry a million BTUs, so.
Yeah.
You might as well just, I don't know why they went one inch to begin with, unless they used it cross-country. They did use it on one service cross-country.
What's, what's interesting, yeah, well, you know, we are, we are our own provider for distribution. So, you know, I see your, I forgot this, but yeah, Palmar has all that subcontracted out.
Yeah, they got a contractor that runs the whole gas system.
I didn't know that.
Same with Hannibal.
Okay.
Only ones comparable has to be Perry, Paris, and Chobana.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, actually Greg did. I didn't, if you were saying something, I wouldn't understand.
I had a question on you, I should, but Terry's not here.
Hey, he is.
He's in his stealth.
He's trying to hide.
Stealth uniform.
So are we no longer going to offer a hundred amp service, I guess? Is that the plan here?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, what came up in the discussion, no one does a two-hundred amp anymore.
A hundred.
I'm sorry, no one did a hundred.
There's basically two hundred.
So.
The insurance companies kind of require you to have the, like, larger service now.
Supposedly.
Insurance, yeah.
If you put in a hundred amp, and then somebody comes in and calls you more, whatever, you know, it's way over. Yeah. So it's just, it's easier, and a hundred-amp meter boxes can cost as much as the two-hundred-amp meter boxes or two-hundred-amp first box, and there's really no cost. Yeah. Makes sense. Thank you. So is this, oh, it's a temporary meter. I'll pretend I also have to say.
Have we been enforcing the rezoning fee?
Rezoning fee?
Rezoning.
Rezoning, yeah.
A rezoning.
Are we collecting the rezoning fee now, do you know?
What, what was, I'm sorry.
Are we collecting the rezoning fee request now?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're doing away with the demolition permit fees altogether?
No, it doesn't change from the current.
Oh.
Yeah, if it's in yellow, and there's a value there changed to the new value, that's proposed, that's the proposed fees column. And then where there is no data within that field, that we just.
Okay.
It stays the same.
Keep the current fee structure.
Okay. So we're gonna, we're encouraging residential building while you're removing that fee?
I guess, I guess you could say it, say it that way.
Makes sense? That's for new build, I guess?
We didn't do anything with the building permit bond, although our nearest, our nearest cousin does a double permit fee requirement for the refundable bond. We did, we chose not to do that. We didn't change the commercial fees relative to square footage.
Okay, I'm confused then. Under residential fees, the first line is residential building permit fee homes. Was seventy-five, new is none, but then you go down to building permit.
That would be commercial.
But it's still showing under residential fees. It's twenty cents per square foot with a maximum of ten thousand.
He's talking about this versus this. What is the difference between this and this?
How much time I'm dicting it? Where are you at, Mike? On what would be line?
Four.
Four. Kind of contradicts line one.
Are we getting rid of the seventy-five and just doing it based on square footage then?
That was the intent.
Yeah, that would make sense. Is there a minimum on that?
Doesn't appear to be maximum, but.
No. Uh, that was mimicked from, that, we, they actually mimicked.
Remember Palmyra's, yeah, I see that.
So what, what should happen? The only thing that was supposed to remain was the, a change to the utility accessory buildings. And the first line should have just been left off. I guess it was left on there for, I don't know what reason, communication? That we switched from a permit fee, which was a set fee, to a building permit that is based on square footage. Well, it, we didn't, we didn't exactly get that correct, so.
So the first one should be removed?
Yes.
Yeah.
We, if we were to consider this, we would need to strike that first line.
Or just call it residential building permit and scratch that first line.
I would scratch the first line completely all the way across, there's no confusion. And the, the building. The, the commercial fees did not change. And that's to not discourage commercial, does that make sense?
Is there any maximum on the commercial?
No.
Okay.
Well, it's, 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 you know, point zero three versus point two, so it's.
Oh, no, wait, I see it's maximum three hundred on the other line.
I think we were doing the twenty cents per square foot, maximum ten thousand for all.
Yeah, this doesn't read that.
For commercial and residential, because that doesn't read that.
Say it again, Mike.
He's saying twenty cents for residential and commercial.
Yeah, residential fees.
This doesn't.
This is a maximum of three hundred dollars on commercial. I don't think we want that.
I mean, I guess basically, I can see kind of what they're trying, but here the chief, they're basically saying we need to rid of the commercial ones, and they're making it into a residential, it's going to be the same for commercial residential.
So, that's a good question, I don't recall that.
Or is it going to be the same maximum but three cents for commercial?
Well, I mean, basically here, they're basically kind of wiping all that out and saying we're going to do.
We were mimicking Palmyra for their residential and commercial fees for all of that. I think we. We just weren't going to do the double permit bond.
Well, the commercial, yeah, I mean, this is not.
So you're saying the commercial wasn't going to change?
So there's only a three hundred dollar maximum for commercial?
No, we were going to do the twenty cents per square foot with a hundred dollar flat rate for commercial. We were going to do what Palmyra does in that far right corner, except for the double permit fee, the refundable bond. We weren't going to do that.
Okay, so now we're down on commercial.
They'll still pay for the twenty cents per square foot, maximum thousand, that would be proposed residential.
Well, this doesn't say, this doesn't say that.
Can we clean this up and bring it back to?
Yes.
Yeah, this is quite few.
So let's go ahead and finish.
Okay.
So we're going, we're going to strike the commercial, utilize the same fee structure as residential. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what they're proposing there.
Okay. So we struck the first, well, actually the second line, which was the residential building permit fee for homes. We struck that, we're going to strike commercial, we're going to add residential slash commercial up here at the top, we'll get rid of this into our set of fields, demolition will stay the same. The miscellaneous fees, which are variance, conditional use, rezoning, and site plan, those will change to these new numbers. Everyone was satisfied with the temporary meters, and satisfied with the water taps, and were satisfied with gas, the one thing we did not talk about, that I recall, was street excavation.
That was a thousand dollar flat rate for.
And on sewer connections and water connections at the bottom, it, we're removing those? I don't understand what that is.
Well, if somebody demolished their house, you can't just leave the water and sewer hooked up because it causes employment filtration.
Okay.
So if they want it disconnected, if they want it left there for future development, then that's not a problem, they just have to cap it off properly, and I worked with them on that. But if they want it actually removed where there's no water or sewer, that there needs to be a charge for that.
Well, I'm hearing it showing remove as in, like, there's not going to be a charge.
Here on the bottom of our sheet, I mean, I'm not sure, it's showing different than the cap fee. There's, there's a line that's talking, that it's getting marked to remove.
Okay, but there is a cap fee on there?
Yes, there's a water cap and there's a sewer cap, one fifty and three hundred. But then right below that is sewer connections, remove, water connections, remove.
They're really the same thing.
It means the same?
Yeah, it means the same thing, so.
There's extra lines or something on there.
I just think the connection is a new service or something now.
Which is the water.
So what needs to be done to this?
I think just take that out.
Yeah.
Take the bottom two off?
Yeah, isn't that?
Just too large.
Yeah, I, I think it's a little bit cleaner if you leave the remove, not the cap. You know, nobody knows what cap in a water line or cap in a sewer line.
Would you look at this, make sure, I don't think we're taking the same. See, we have this one.
Maybe take a look at it, because it's confusing.
And we're proposing this and this, but then down here, it says sewer connections, but it says just remove.
Oh, I see what you're talking about, okay.
So we take these two lines out and leave these two in?
Yeah, and leave them to one.
It'd be, yeah.
It'd be fine, yes. Okay, good enough. So, we will postpone this until the next meeting. And that's not required to do anything special to make that happen.
We got to do anything with posted needs fees or anything?
No. According to C turn, no. I ask. Okay. Real quick, Missouri Mill Craft is back on. They sent in a wire on Tuesday that covered the previous bill. And it was sufficient also to cover the previous penalty, not the penalty that takes effect October first, previous penalty because of the building cycle was prior to October first, and the reconnection fees. And so I consulted with the city attorney, and based on that, we turned them back on. And I think this question came up again about, about the promissory note. The promissory note that was drew up back in twenty-twenty-three didn't have any means whereby to, how do I want to say this? There were, there were no leans placed on any, on any equipment or property, and there was no penalty for not making the payment. Shutting their, shutting them off was not within the note, it was never addressed within the note. And so as long as they're on, current, on their current bill, we will continue to provide them service.
What month?
Well, as long as they're current on their current bill, keep making payments, so they keep making payments, so that's, every month is.
And we'll have a discussion later about the latest communication regarding the note, and I'll share that in a second session. Tanya, I had on here to speak for the chamber, is that now necessary because you're here, or?
I mean, if you don't need me, say hello. I know I did Alex my long notes, I didn't get back, so it's up to you.
Well, give me just a minute, would you? Is that in this, is that, is that pack, is that in here in the packet?
Yeah, it's under.
Bear with me. I'm getting there.
Are you talking about the email?
Okay, have you got, have you got this layout?
The email is what was sent, that we turned off of what they were wanting for.
Okay, now Kevin's, Kevin's not here. He said that he, they had already had these discussions, but they're requesting, the formal request in addition to what's on this, the trash cans, et cetera, et cetera, picnic tables.
So what I gave you was just on the other part, because I assumed that you would have wanted to submit what it was going to look like, where everything was going to be stationed.
Correct.
So that you knew exactly what was going on, so that's why before the meeting, I gave all of that to go with the email, so.
All right. The other thing that's on this request from Debbie, who's sent this, is that they want to get permission for the street closure of Court from Maine from Vine, and Vine, Court to Catherine, and Catherine, Maine to Vine, barricades to, to use for those closures, and then.
Yeah, that was the thing with the electric. Yeah, that was the thing with the electric, but then somebody updated me, so I went over there today, took pictures so that everybody would know where they could do and what the ambid was. Um, so everybody's on the same speed going forward with that.
Okay, and the trash cans, I, I don't know what that means. The DTMC trash cans for safety.
There's trash cans that have DTMC, the logo.
Oh, oh, we have those, I guess.
Yeah, usually for the city building. And since there's only just a couple trash cans over there, because I've applied for a grant to get some more, uh, for you guys hopefully, uh, around town or whatever, but, um.
Anyway, I think DTMC usually picks them up. They just call Kevin and, yeah, lots of, they go get them.
Okay.
Yeah.
No problem.
And Sid's gonna help do that, so.
And then they'll put them away, too.
And it sounds like you gotta have a dumpster, you have the porta potties, and you have hand washing coming, so we don't have to worry about that. So basically what you need is an, uh, uh, approval from the board to close the streets that you've requested to, to close. We would need a motion to make that happen.
I'll make a motion for that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the street closing.
I'll second.
A motion and a second on the floor to approve the street closings. Do we, uh, all in favor, say aye?
And also that can use the barricades.
And the barricades, yeah. And the barricades. We, what we'll do, we'll give this all to, to, to Kevin along with this right here, Alex, and make sure this happens. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
On that, are we going to be building chamber commerce for use of electric utilities for the event?
Yeah. It's not, it's not.
It's minimal.
No, it's not. It's a couple thousand.
That's a, that's a, that's a metered con, that's a carry.
It's a meter connection.
That's a metered connection?
What?
Is that a metered connection?
What's that?
For North Park, I'm sorry, for St. Jude's.
The one in the street that DTMC uses. There's usually two or three vendors.
There's three.
Yeah, there's probably three vendors hooked up on Catherine, and then two hooked up in the park by the tower.
And during the street strolls, we have other temper, or other meters on down on those. This one has, you have one over by the water tire, you have one on the corner of Catherine and Vine, and.
And then right in the middle, there's the six of two points.
There, I'm sorry, there's two meters on Catherine and Vine, so there's three.
Okay, so would you?
Somebody's have to read it before they.
Yeah. You, you would necessarily read those, you would necessarily read those prior to the event and then read them after the event?
Yes, Monday morning.
Okay, good enough.
Yeah, because, uh, Alex and I looked at those meters, the, the stray on those meters, they're getting used a lot more than just sporadically. I did, I don't know. The one on the, one of them does run the church. No, it was more than that, wasn't it? And that was just the one meter, um, like, crossing the church on my, was that Vine?
Sounds like we might want to have a discussion about this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I, I just don't want somebody to pull up and be charging their car out of it or something, you know?
So then just maybe we run the meters this time, take a look or something, and go over.
Yeah.
Well, he, he, he will read the meters, uh, prior to the event, then read the meters after the event, and then we'll get back with you guys on, uh, potential.
Yeah, that's fine. And then I asked Alex today about, um, to make sure that I have the right code ordinances for pets and everything in the park, just to make sure, since we are having a pet show, that nothing comes into action to where I need to make sure I can say this is or isn't acceptable in the park.
Are you able, are you able to provide that?
I've been looking into it and I'm.
Because the, the, the issue that we have is the current black ordinance book is no longer valid. Uh, uh, last year, uh, the board elect, uh, acting twenty twenty-two, the board elected to, uh, use MuniCode online. There, there are associated fees with producing printed copies. We are in the process of getting those done. And we've also signed a contract with them where we will send them monthly or, or quarterly, uh, any ordinance changes, they will automatically update those. We had, uh, I'll use the word we, we had chosen to use, uh, the manual method of updating, which means someone here would have, had to have done it, and it hasn't been done since twenty twenty-two. So that's what the board elected to try to correct that situation. Alex will, uh, research it, uh, and get back to you to the best of our ability.
Yeah, okay, because I want to have it posted, and then if someone does have any, you know, we can stay in compliance.
And what do we do if we can't find it? What do we tell them?
We are currently halfway through the reclassification process. They have to get everything back up to date, then we would send them all the missing ordinances, they would.
I mean, what if we can't find the ordinance?
Per, per specific request regarding pets.
In the park.
Been looking for them, trying to find.
I know, but what do we do if we can't find them? I mean, we just.
In, in absence of an ordinance, nothing.
Okay.
Uh, Chief James, do you have any comments on potential issues with pets in the park?
It's a pet show.
Good enough, it's good enough for me.
Thank you.
Give her clarification.
Fluffy on the. Don't get me in trouble. Okay, next, I apologize, I'm sorry.
We're having a side conversation.
Oh, that's fine. This is your meeting.
Move along.
Go ahead.
Okay, moving right along. City Clerk's report. Alex, you are now the city clerk for a brief period of time. And be good at it, it'll be really brief.
In your minders, there should be a list of the accounts that we have. The general fund currently stands at one million, five hundred, two thousand, four hundred, twenty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. The wastewater improvement, construction funds, it's sixty-two thousand, five hundred, fifty-nine thousand dollars, thirty-one cents. And the sweep accounts, it's a six thirty, six hundred, thirty thousand and twenty dollars and one cent.
Oh, I found it.
Excuse me?
I saw, just found that page.
It should be under pets here.
Under set, yeah.
Anything else? That complete the city clerk's report?
Yes, sir.
That was amazingly fast.
Yeah.
That's it.
The city attorney will not be here tonight. However, if during the course of the meeting or any meeting that we have tonight, uh, he is available by phone, to answer any questions. Okay, next thing on the agenda, if there's no questions about the city attorney issue, uh, authorized guest speaker is, uh, Tanya Pryor. Do you have anything further to add? Thank you very much. Next thing we have on the agenda is planning and zoning. And there's no one here from planning and zoning, and I do not, I'm not aware of anything within the packet, although I can assure you of that. There's not. Next thing will be parks and recreation.
There's nothing under chat and I, so I'm assuming that.
I haven't heard of the updates.
Uh, I will, I will briefly say that we did, um, get in, uh, option A and option B, uh, from Hutchison, uh, on, uh, the, uh, I'll use the phrase playground equipment, which is part of the, uh, upgrade, uh, for, uh, the North Park project, is what I've chosen to call it. And I'll be getting with the, uh, chairman, chairperson of, uh, Parks and Cemetery, and we will schedule a meeting to review those options so that, uh, the park board can review those and come back with their recommendation on which option they believe would be the, the best option.
Did they have cost estimates tied to that, do you know?
I cannot answer that question because we did not open up one of the boxes. But, uh, I'm, I'm guessing the answer is yes. I know that what, uh, the grants were like two oh seven, two hundred, and the city's portion was fifty percent, was two oh seven, two hundred, so we're gonna try very, very hard to make sure everything falls within the budget. Next thing was, uh, economic development.
Had a meeting this past Monday, um, Laurie was doing the minutes, but, uh, don't have those yet.
Okay. Okay.
Our next meeting, uh, we would like to have on October seventeenth, which is our next city council meeting, to have it at five o'clock in order, and to invite all the aldermen to be able to go over some of the specifics of the, uh, tax we're working on.
Will, will you have, will you have, uh, wi- within your presentation, uh, will you be able to speak to, um, the expected, uh, composition of the board? Uh, what requirements may or may increase, uh, regarding the city's responsibility as far as administration?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, because Debbie was there, and then one person from their pack was there, um, and they'll be there again the ne- the next meeting at nine o'clock.
Good.
Just to try to make it easier for, for everyone to try to attend, just to make it an hour before the regular meeting.
Okay.
And, uh, Debbie emailed that, that information out as well to everyone. Did it, did you get it? Oh, I have to double check that it went out to everyone. I thought it did.
Do you know what she sent it?
Um, Monday or Tuesday, probably Tuesday.
What was the, what was the, what was the heading? That was from you, correct?
No, it was from Debbie.
Debbie Kendrick.
It was.
It's regarding their taxes, not our tax.
I know, not the talk show. But I'm the secretary of that, and so she probably only sent it to him, but I can look and resend it out to everybody.
Okay.
I have all that information for you guys, so.
That would be, that would be great. That would be great. Thank you, Tanya. Anything else for economic development?
Oh, yeah. No.
Okay. Uh, administration? No? Uh, public safety and nuisance review board?
No, but I did see her email this morning when I was looking for the, the packet.
Yes, I think, uh, I think that'd be great to do that if we can. I know that, uh, Chief James has, has some things he would like to discuss with us, and, uh, with the, uh, with the changing of the guard relative to, uh, fire protection, I think that we probably need to sit down and, uh, try to reprimand around that. Uh, Zach is, uh, is our emergency preparedness director, and I'll, I'll be interested in hearing, uh, his input, uh, on what this change, uh, may mean for us. So, uh, would you, are, are you planning on scheduling one?
I'm gonna try, but I may have to lean on Alderman Snyder if it's during business hours.
I, I, Zach, do you know of any reason why we couldn't have a, a public safety, uh, slash nuisance review board meeting at six or even seven o'clock at night? Would that be a, a burden?
No, that's fine with me.
Okay. So I think you can use six, kind of, or above, and that will allow, you know, I don't recall, you're, you're on, uh, public safety.
Right.
Greg, you're on public safety. So I know Greg.
Six would work better for me, you also.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that's exactly where I was going with my con, with my comments, is that would help, help Greg a lot.
Okay.
So, and, uh, so, you, you set that, and I, I would like to, like to come be a, be a, a observer at least.
Okay. I'll call tomorrow and see what is already scheduled in the near future.
Anything else for public safety?
No.
Okay. Let's move on now, uh, to department reports. Uh, first thing on the agenda is the police department, and Chief James.
I've got just a couple of short things here. Uh, number one is our patrol cars. Uh, we're down to two right now. However, it's gonna be, uh, for maintenance on them. We did have a couple of recalls while they were in there. There was some warranty covered issues that, uh, one of the vehicles had, so we went and took the others in. The other vehicle had same issues, so we're getting all this covered under warranty before they go out of that. Uh, so we're hoping to have them back by the beginning to middle of next week, and it should be back up to full fleet. Um, so if you do see any crazy bills come across for maintenance on PD side, let us know. Uh, because there should be all under warranty. Um, and then the second thing I'd like to address is now that we're getting into fall, we're gonna be approaching winter months, we're gonna start focusing more on, uh, their, like, vehicles and debris in yards rather than our overgrown grass, things of that nature, uh, for nuisances, so, uh, should be seeing a pickup on, on vehicles around town that are abandoned and stuff like that, starting to get moved out, so. But other than that, that's all I have for tonight. Unless anybody has any questions.
Uh, real quick, uh, your, your capital, your capital request, uh, got that, uh, taken a real good look at it, and, uh, we'll be having meetings, uh, with, uh, probably individual department heads, uh, to try to make it as, uh, timely as possible for each one of you guys, so you're setting through hours and hours and hours of meetings. But, uh, very well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
I was gonna, maybe I, it's my, I was gonna ask the budget question, but you only wait till unfinished business?
Did I move, did I move to something?
No, I was going to ask a budget, a question about the budgets, but I can wait until unfinished.
That's perfect, that's perfect. Um, of course, we will, um, no longer, uh, after now, be, um, directly involved in fire protection, so we can remove that from our agenda.
So this is the, they accepted that at their meeting, so that's.
It, it, it is all practical purpose. They accepted the proposal. Uh, the process now will be, uh, in doing, uh, all the legal requirements for the transfer, uh, of the, of the equipment in, in, in the property. And, uh, they're meeting with, uh, people for, you know, insurance, they've got to do the work comp, uh, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, conversation with their secretary if we receive any bills, uh, for anything that occurred after October first to get them to them. They will pay for those items.
I went Jackie to get some of the other services, like internet, if I was over to them, I think we should see a little less of dance before, because they will be taking over the dumpsters.
Next on the agenda is water.
I want to just remind you all that, uh, October sixteenth is the deadline for the lead and copper, uh, initial, um, report due to, uh, DNR slash EPA. So I don't know who's working on that. Um, just need to make sure that it gets done.
Would you back up one second? Repeat that last question.
I'm not sure who's working on that.
Yes.
Then that is.
Then that is? Okay.
Did we ever get approval from the state to utilize an engineering firm?
An engineer, oh, the, the, uh, to do the, do the work? I, I have no idea. I, I am not, I haven't heard anything, so I.
You wouldn't be on that mailing list, probably.
You, I, I would think, but, uh, I, I have no idea where, 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 where this is.
I know Dan Dover submitted his request for payment for the final, uh, payment for their services.
Okay.
I guess I better write that down and find out where we're at, because the holdup was not the city's motto city, nor was it, uh, Dan Dover's company. It was DNR.
Right. Yeah, I know it took, uh, about five months in Canton for us to get, uh, the approval to go ahead and proceed.
Those, all the state agencies are ways, are really, really slow right now.
Okay.
Uh, it's been terrible since COVID, like, all of those agencies.
Since COVID.
Since COVID, and it has not gotten better. It's, it's got, no, it has gotten better. It's been very slow.
Yes.
Stuff that used to take a couple of weeks for us, it's perfect here. Take months now.
Yep.
I know there's some other things you want to discuss tonight.
Yes, the Missouri Metal Craft water leak. So, um, when we went over and shut the valves off, one of the valves broke. And it broke in the closed position. Um, it is, uh, an eight-inch valve that comes off of the ten-inch main, and eight-inch valve surfaces one of their building. surfaces one of their buildings. So they do have water, they have enough to, it's, it's, it broke closed, but it's, it never got all the way closed. So we dug it up today, and we found that the two bolts that hold the packing gland on the top of it are gone. They're, they're rusted, they're rusted off, so. The, the valve was also tarred over, so at that point, we were beating the tar off, trying to figure out what exactly we had. And so I could not get a price before the meeting, because I didn't find out till after they were closed exactly what we have. It is an eight-inch valve, it's a face flange by mechanical joint, and we do not have one. We have four eight-inch valves, they're all MJ by MJ, mechanical joint by mechanical joint. So I need to purchase a face flange by mechanical joint valve and a eight-inch high-max copper. I would, I don't know a price on these, because I, again, I didn't know what I was gonna need. I'm assuming it's gonna be about $2,000. And I can have it here in the morning, and we can have this fixed, this leak fixed, and the main back open to Missouri Metal Craft, so they have water in their buildings.
I assume this is our responsibility?
Well, uh...
Is it before or after?
Yeah, it, it's, well, the meters are inside, and this is outside at the main, but this is the valve that feeds the buildings.
The whole building?
Yeah.
So is that first valve that's in our, basically our valve?
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it'd be like on a meter setter at any of your houses, right before the meter, there's a valve. It's, it's the city's responsibility up to the valve and through the meter, after that, it's the customers.
Right.
But, but yes, they, they have fixed, uh, the other valve went bad, and they fixed it in the past. I asked Zach, and he said, "Well, we're not gonna fix it," so.
Is prior to the meter, we had a discussion real quick, if I may, if I may.
Yes, please.
I had a discussion with George, the question was something was this, we're producing water that's being expelled through the leak, how many hundreds of gallons a day, you think?
Uh, it's probably three to five gallons a minute, a minute that we're, that we're losing.
Yes. And so it's prior to the meter connection, you, you, you're losing money.
Right.
Losing money, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and regardless of them, if we hopefully have another tenant in that building someday, you need that back, so it's, it's gotta be fixed.
It, it does have to be fixed. And the 2,000, I, I'm hoping that's a good number, it might be 2,200, it might be, you know, 15. I'm just spitballing a 2,000, so I just need your approval to buy these two items I need in order to fix this, fix this leak, and the cost is gonna be what the cost is gonna be.
Can you give us not to, can you give us a reasonable not-to-exceed number?
Not a reasonable one?
25,000 or 3,000?
I, I don't know. The last six-inch valve I bought was almost $800.
Under $3,000 total?
Yes, under $3,000.
Okay.
Well, I like a motion that we approve the water department spending up to $3,000 to repair the...
We have a motion on the floor to approve an expenditure of up to $3,000 to correct the water leak at Missouri Metal Craft. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion for on a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Wonderful. Just wanted to cover, last week, the water did have a little bit of a taste in there. I don't know if anybody...
I know.
Yes, okay, mostly in the hot water. Your hot water, you probably smelled it worse when you're taking a shower.
It's a musty.
Yeah, it, it, it was. I, we, we had a blue, a blue-green algae bloom, and the, that, the filters will not catch that. Carbon will not correct it. We copper sulfated, and within two days, we quit smelling it at the plant. Just wanna let you know that we have got that taken care of. And we had copper sulfated just two and a half, three weeks before that. You don't wanna put too much copper into your water source, 'cause what happens is it goes to the bottom. Someday, if you ever do dredge that, the, all that copper will be in that, that, you might have to take it to a landfill if you get too much copper, 'cause you can't spread it out on the ground. But, okay.
A handout that we don't have?
Do we need to talk about, Mr. Mayor, do we need to talk about the algae at Mosswood or...
Yes, please proceed.
Okay. The Mosswood, the lake, I don't, it's called North, is it North Lake, or is that what it's called?
West Lake.
West Lake, okay, yeah. It has algae that has been out there for, you know, a couple of years, and it grows around the edges and makes it hard for anybody that wants to enjoy the lake to be able to enjoy the lake. I am not a pond or a, you know, I, this kind of algae doesn't bother a water treatment, so I have never dealt with it. I have done some research, there's a, different websites you can look at, and there's different people that say, "Oh yeah, you can treat it with this, treat it with that," you know, "buy our product." We're to the point where we're gonna have to do something. Yeah, grass carp could work, but if you've ever been out there, that, that lake is so silted in, there's not much volume there.
Oh.
So, not that grass carp wouldn't work, but, but yeah, grass carp could be purchased, and that'd be up to the city to decide if you wanted to try to kill this stuff. There are options for manual removal of it. I hope you do not choose that option, because that is, it's, it's, I actually just did a small lake, and it, it took us about 80 hours to do the small lake, and it's, this is too big of a lake to do that thing. We, we don't have a boat that'll get on that lake. The city does own a, it's a bass boat, and that's what we use out on Route J when we go out and copper sulfate the lake. So we'd have to borrow a boat, borrow a motor to get out there, or rent one, I guess. But I don't know how much we wanna spend on, on this lake to actually get it fixed.
Is it a fishing lake?
You can't fish in there, people, yeah, people do fishing there.
So this is a John boat with a trolling motor kind of a thing?
A trolling motor will not get you through this stuff. It's really a John boat and probably a large mud motor is what you need. And a mud motor has like a six or eight-foot shaft on the back of it that just barely goes under the water, and you just can't. You can't get a, if you try to put a normal outboard in there with as much stuff as in there, you're gonna plug your jets up, your cooling jets. So you need a air-cooled motor, and the mud motors are the only ones I know of that are, that are air-cooled.
How deep is that lake?
I don't know at the, at the intake where the golf course water's from, but last time I was in there and treated it, really, the ore would go down, and you could pull yourself along with the ore. And that's all the way on the, the south side of it, as well as the east side of it, where we try to launch. And that's why we can't launch, we couldn't even dream of launching the bass boat, because it doesn't drop off, it just goes out and out now.
Sounds like it needs to be dug out. How long did it take for it to get from point A to point B with this algae?
Since I've been here, I've been dealing with the golf course and, and this algae. It, it, it's, it's never went away, then? We've treated it with copper sulfate, it's, it's slowed up some, but I don't think copper sulfate is the answer on this. I, I think some other sort of algicide is, that's safe for water, is what's needed.
Would, would like the Department of Conservation or something help us out, do they have, do they have people who like to look at your private projects?
Yeah, I, I cannot answer that.
I mean, that's, that's, as a city, it's still our government service.
Mm-hmm.
You could ask them.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, I, I know I've been asked to look at this, and, and, and we've been so busy with our water leaks and, and everything else, and going, I haven't been able to give the time I need for this. But, like I said, I, I know there is product out there that would probably kill it.
Who makes them?
Yeah, I bet you do. Yeah, there's a, I can't, I can't remember the name of it, but...
Does it need to be dredged out?
Uh, yes, but the cost is gonna be astronomical. That's, that, in my opinion, that is what, what you need, yeah. There, there's not enough water volume, you know, the, the, the golf course sprays, so fertilizers, which then run into this lake, which then encourage the growth of the algae. So, you know, if it may stop the drainage from there coming in, it's gonna take many years for the fertilizer stuff.
So right now, it's basically just a, a layer, complete layer?
Uh, probably anywhere from 10 to 20 foot out from the shore all the way around.
Right.
There's a, a lot of places where vegetation, the residents have just let trees and stuff grow, and they're hanging over into it. It is not a very pretty lake.
Yeah.
All the way around. Yeah, well, that used to be the water source, too, a long time ago.
Yeah, there you go.
Exactly, yeah, it hasn't been maintained, so I don't know how much we even wanna look at this, and I can bring something back next time, hopefully I'll be able to spend some time. And if, if you guys do sell something that you have an idea might kill this, it's more of a, it's like a map of, of just...
We have, yeah, we do make stuff that is ready for, uh, killing, yeah, is ready for using, quite, I do not know like all of the other side items of what, if it's what you would wanna use out there.
Right, right.
You know, because there's, uh, but it is ready to kill.
Okay.
I, I get that.
Great, well, I'll do some more research on that. Does anybody have any other questions for me? All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, George. Next thing we have on the agenda is electric, and I'm going to help out this a little bit with this. On the industrial substation, you may recall that I think on September, it doesn't matter when it was approved, hold on, okay, on September 24th, the board approved the purchase of batteries for the control system on the substation, switchgear, and that quote was for $19,921.59, and the board approved spending that. We ordered the batteries, and we actually chose this provider, because their lead time was gonna be four weeks, maximum, four weeks. So we placed the order, and now it's 10 weeks. And that means that we would not be able to schedule commissioning of the substation till the end of November, which is not a very good time. And of course, there's other companies that have to be involved in this commissioning. So it didn't work out real well, so we immediately went back to the drawing board, contacted MPUA, and begged for assistance, and they hooked us up with a company in St. Louis who's going to be able to provide not 30 batteries, not 20 batteries, but 10 batteries that will get us up to 120 volts, which is what we have to have for this, and rack, and a new charger to go with it, because our charger is suspect, for a grand total of $11,886 and some change, instead of the $19,921 that you previously approved.
So it'd be a third of the number of batteries for half the price.
Well, here's the deal, you needed 34-volt batteries, you need 34-volt batteries to get 120, or you need 26, 26 or 10 12ths.
Okay.
But we had to have the right rack, we had to have the right charging equipment, blah, blah, blah.
So in the end, this is cheaper then?
And we'll have it in four weeks.
Ah, well, that sounds like a win-win win all the way around.
Except the charger.
What about the charger?
It says eight to 10 weeks.
Oh, they updated that this afternoon, it's now four weeks.
Oh, cool.
Well, no, I apologize. You are absolutely correct. The charger is eight to 10, but ours will get us by until it comes in. When I said suspect, it doesn't mean it doesn't work.
Right, we're just not...
It's just, it's as old as the batteries.
Yeah.
And this is gonna be a 12-volt system, so we're gonna have to take it from six volt to 12 on the charger system, have to reprogram it. And it's highly suspect, so yes, you are correct. The initial holdup was the rack, they couldn't guarantee, they didn't know for sure what the rack was. They came in later on this afternoon and said the rack would be four weeks as well. So I'm asking the board to allow us to purchase these batteries, the battery rack and the charger from Electro Rep, save, I don't know, save $8,100, and get it here in four weeks.
And we've already canceled the other one? We've already bid this, so we've already gone through the process.
Yes, this will be the fourth bid.
Okay.
This will be the fourth.
Well, and I think with all that's going on with the, there and the hurricane stuff, that we probably wanna get this order in faster, sooner rather than later, because four weeks might go to six months or...
So you wanna make a motion?
I think a motion that we take this, uh, new bid and...
A second?
We have a motion, a second on the floor, to cancel the order with Power Solutions, and to approve the $11,886, and I may, I hope my math is right, with Electro Rep and $8,000. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moken, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you very much. We'll get those on order tomorrow, Alex. We, we really wanna get this sub, substation up and running prior to the holidays. We have to schedule other companies to come in and do some work, so it's very helpful to get that done.
The strike on the East Coast is not gonna help things either.
Good point. They postponed it until January.
Good point, we need to get this done.
They renegotiated it.
Oh, did they?
Yeah. They've got, they're back at work?
What happened?
They're back at work.
They probably decided it wasn't a good optics to do the strike while there was a hurricane.
Until, they're gonna have discussions until January the 15th or something.
That is awesome news. That is awesome news. That's very good. Thank you for sharing that, folks. Gas. Anything for Gas Department?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you wanna do anything about the truck repair?
On the truck repair, we've, 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 we've urged you this, we've urged you this a couple, a couple times, trying to get multiple quotations for repair to the truck. We started out with one, I believe, one back in August for, for 25-18-07 from JC Repair, and then we have a, another one now. Is there a third one?
I can't get the truck looked at by Terry until Monday.
Have you talked to him?
I talked to him earlier this week, but he couldn't get to it until Monday to look at it. And we didn't get the truck from Roberts, still, just this week.
So in Roberts' estimate was 1899, so currently Roberts would be the, would be the cheapest quotation. What do you want us to do?
Do you wanna wait till Monday to have Terry to look at it, give us another call?
I do, but I also wanna understand the necessity of getting this truck repaired. Is it causing us any issues first, are buildings...
It's not causing us any issues, other than...
Then, then we will hold off.
We can hold on the floor, so.
Okay, we, we, we will hold off when we have a third quotation, and that will be considered for our ordinances. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
If it's not emergency, we'll wait, we'll wait till the, we'll wait till the first, the quote comes in.
And can I go out for apps for new employees we lost quick?
You are asking the board for approval to seek applicants for the open position in the Gas Department?
Correct.
Today, I participated in assisting Terry with responses to Missouri Public... Missouri Public, did I miss something?
Nope.
If I did, I'll go back.
Nope, you're good, keep going.
Uh, with the Missouri, uh.
Public Service Commission.
Say it again?
Public Service Commission.
Public Service Commission, uh, I don't know how many bolts, uh, were within, uh, that inspection that require corrective action, but I do know what many of the corrective actions, uh.
There was twenty-three bolts total.
Twenty-two total.
Rest of our areas, uh, staff areas of concern, I did.
So staffing is a problem, uh, staffing is a problem, getting, uh, all the inspections done, uh, maintaining all the documentation that has to be done, uh, we've got additional training that needs to occur with some of our associates.
And they are working on it.
And so.
Technically, they can't go out and work in the field hands-on unless I'm with them. Depends on the only one qualified.
I, I'm not sure what the, what the correct answer is, I know that, uh, if we do not get these corrected in a timely manner, uh, there are penalties associated with these deficiencies in our gas distribution system. I would recommend that the board consider, uh, employing, uh, fill, filling that, uh, backfilling that spot, and, uh, we will need to do review and consideration of our current O and M costs, and our current rate structure, uh, natural gas, uh, and, and, trust me, I don't like paying it either, but with the realization that we do provide the natural gas, we are responsible for distribution, we are responsible for safety, uh, those, those requirements don't go away. And the cost of providing, uh, this service and this product has gone up, and we have done nothing, uh, in multiple years to a, address, uh, the same cost that the city incurred as every one of us does with inflation, everything costs more. And so we're gonna have to look at our O and M, which are operations and maintenance costs, which includes labor, obviously, and, 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 and see, uh, if modifications need to be made to the rate structure to be able to afford, uh, the staffing that we have to have to do distribution of natural gas, but it starts in Ladonia. We are responsible for the line from Ladonia to Monroe City. We have to inspect the line, we have to snip the line all the way from there to here, we have to keep all the brush and tree stuff off the top of it. It's a significant amount of work that most people don't ever know anything about.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not saying that, you know, uh, anything other than, uh, i- if, once you become aware of the complexities, especially the requirements for the federal government and the state government on inspections, uh, they come in, they go over your paperwork, they go over your documentation, they want the I's off and T's crossed, it takes personnel to do that, and I'll stop.
And this inspection, they went back to twenty nineteen. Yeah, I wasn't really happy about that.
Wow.
So if, if the board would like to, uh, go out for, uh, request applications to fill that position, I would need a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion to, uh, go out for applications to backfill the position, I guess.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to go out for applications for, uh, what do you call that position?
Operator, pipeline operator.
Pipeline operator for the gas department, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor to, uh, seek applications to, uh, fill the position for the, the gas line operator, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, let's get started.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Continue to.
If you guys get the budget figured out yet, so.
I apologize, what?
Has the side-by-side been cut out, but?
The side-by-side currently is in the budget, uh, when the appropriate time comes to have discussions with the board about the budget, line items, and capital expenditures, we will do our very best to explain the necessity, necessity of that, and has the fire department come and got their buggy back yet?
I didn't know where they were on it that quick.
Well, let me try it a different way, the, uh, the equipment you're currently using belongs to.
Terry right now, he's, he's got it.
Is that, does it belong to the city?
Belongs to the electric department?
Well, they inherited it, I didn't know, I knew, I heard number that they were.
We're done, we're done, we're done with the conversation.
Okay.
We'll, we'll review that, we'll review those, uh, line by line, when we sit down and do our budget review.
That's great, I'm getting to walk only nine point two miles, I need to wear it, so.
Good enough.
That's a little slower.
Yeah. It didn't take five minutes to walk this line anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, I believe the street department report's in the packet, if you have any questions on street. Airport, I will simply say that, uh, we will be getting together, I'll be getting together with, uh, Delbert Buckman, and we'll be going over, uh, the proposed list of, uh, activities that, uh, we're looking to have a, go up for request qualifications for, uh, an engineer. Uh, you weren't here, Nico came in and gave a presentation, uh, very good presentation, uh, they are, uh, working with other cities. Uh, they're able, they have been able to, uh, find grants, if you will, uh, from the federal government to, uh, cover maintenance costs for airports. Uh, they've been able to find, excuse me?
Fantastic.
Well, unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, uh, in order to, uh, do that, y- you are required to have, you know, an engineering firm, uh, put together the engineering requirements to submit to, to the state to obtain the grant, uh, to cover the cost or cover improvements, and so we'll be putting together the list, the list of, of, uh, very specific list of, of, of needs, uh, and then those will be included in with the, uh, documentation when we s- uh, submit the request for qualifications, so we have to get all, all those loose ends tied up. And then we will be going out, uh, to, uh, with the request for qualifications, and, and then, uh, based upon, uh, what we receive back, uh, we will review that and then decide what the next steps are going to be. Fair enough? Mosswood. Okay, the next thing we have on, uh, the agenda is presentation of the bills and approval of payments under, should be under tab eleven.
Everything listed as fires prior to?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I had a question on the KPs repair, for the brush truck repair. Is that in the correct category?
Uh, yes.
Okay, that's the street department?
Yeah, they're cleaning truck.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, I know, you're thinking the Redmond.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
This is the one that they use when they go around and, uh, pick up brush.
Okay, okay.
It dropped the, uh, dropped the drive shaft, and had, and had some other issues.
I will also add that on Syntas, I've talked with them quite a bit, and we now have a zero, uh, balance with them for, uh, some stuff that I've been working on with them, uh.
That's gonna drop, is that gonna drop off?
That will drop off, as well as all of our current invoices, which were roughly eight hundred and forty dollars, so there's a zero balance, and that's all.
Syntas.
Save money.
Good.
Is the record software for the police department, is that new or just?
That's not new, that's.
Is that an annual cost?
Uh, yes.
And that banner, which is before October first, I'm guessing?
Yes.
Actually, I think the, I think the actual work was done like in June or July.
Wow.
We're just not getting invoice for it. I, I actually looked at it real close, each one of these ones that came through, uh, again, the date was October first, it was unlikely any of them were after, after October first on the current billing cycle, but we did, we did review each one of them.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as a percentage.
I'll say that.
Okay, but a motion, second on the floor, approve bill table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is new business. Any new business?
No new business.
I got some old business, I got some old business.
I'll bet you do. Un, unfinished business?
Okay, just a couple of questions, well, one's a comment, one's a question. So when we ask the different departments to go out and get bids, who, who keeps those, so that if we, when we get audited, there's documentation that we receive through bids for this project, or we only received two, but we contacted these other people, they didn't respond, or?
We receive, we receive written, uh, written documentation for bids. Those are always included in the packet that we present to the board, correct?
And I keep those packets in.
Well, so they're all electronic?
Electronic and.
And, and I know what you're saying, these aren't.
Well, I mean, we've had situations like that before. I just wanna make sure they don't get away from us, 'cause I think we're making great strides and document, or.
That's a very, very good point, how do we do that?
So when it comes to quotes, department managers normally will email me, I print them off, and I will put them in the packet. Each packet that is presented to council, I keep a physical packet, the original being the physical packet that I keep, and then I keep, then I send out emails, so I have those, we'll save them for.
So if the auditor came, and he said, I wanna see the quotes on the batteries that we just, whatever.
Yep, we would just have to pull out the council meeting for this one, or for the last one that we did, and I would show them all the quotes that were presented to council for that.
Okay, so this packet here will go in with tonight's.
Yes.
Uh, the mess will reflect that we got approval to cancel the bid for Power Solutions, the mess will reflect that we, uh, elected to go with Electro Rep, and then these papers, which are the quotations from both, will go on the record.
Yep.
Is that, is that right? Okay.
Okay, and then the case of George's request for Missouri Millcraft, since that's an emergency, somehow we would need to record that as emergency purchase.
George normally will contact me with the information of what we need to purchase, and I'll print those off, and I put those in our accounts.
But, but with Robbins, we're, and the same is, you're going to get the information from George, what was purchased, how do you tie that back to the board's appro, emergency approval?
Minutes.
With the minutes?
It would need to stay in the minutes, so that it wasn't an emergency. And then just one other little time, I'm so anal about this, um, say if one of the department heads went out and they were owing to get two bids, there needs to be something in there that says, I only received two, but I contacted these other two vendors.
Correct.
So that we know that they made an effort.
Correct. Okay.
I'm sorry, I just.
No, no.
I know what you're doing.
These, uh, these are the things that we need to, uh, bring up, uh, when we're talking about business, so that we make sure that, uh, number one, we're doing what we need to do, and also if there's questions, those questions get answered, and you get, uh, answers to your questions, or, uh, at the very least, uh, a, a response that we are going to get you an answer and get it back to the board, uh, either at the next meeting or before, if you need it.
My feeling is, they're doing it correctly, but I just wanna make sure that it's somehow documented that way.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because it doesn't matter when the audit comes.
That's two years down the road.
You're, you're right, and if you go back and read, read, read the audit from back in, I, I think it was twenty twenty, or whenever it was at, whenever it was, yeah, there was, uh, deficiency, deficiencies in there, and definitely don't want to do a repeat on any of those, if, if, if in any way, uh, possible, we can, uh, not.
So the SOP needs to be updated to make sure that they add any attachments
Okay.
for all of the estimates, or?
And who they contact.
Did you catch all that?
And who their verbal, possible verbally contact are.
Okay, let's make sure it's in the meeting minutes, please.
One other question, Mayor, uh, Budget, where, where, where are we at?
On, on the budget, um, Danette and Jackie, uh, are continuing to, uh, input bank information, I'm gonna make it simple.
Okay.
Bank information, uh, into the general ledger and into, uh, our accounting software. Twenty, twenty-three data is so lacking some information that we may have to go back to the county to get relative to, uh, tax receipts for, uh, property, personal property taxes, as well as verification on the exact amounts for, uh, the park tax. Everything else seems to be pretty clear, uh, what's going to happen, if we're going to present a budget, uh, to this board, I'm hedging on my comment about when, 'cause it's probably gonna be four weeks. And what that will be, will be very simple, uh, uh, budget that you have to approve, uh, to, uh, allow continuation of business for the fiscal year. That will be the one that's very short and sweet, about, you know, twelve lines long. Uh, the actual budget, line item budget, will be complete about the same time. What may change on that budget will be the beginning numbers, because we have to complete and close September of twenty twenty-four. So as you might imagine, closing the end of September twenty twenty-four, is rather difficult to do if you can't close, uh, September of twenty twenty-three, and that's what we're still working on. But we're getting very, very close, we've received all of the budget information from the individual managers, managers, uh, reflecting, uh, a couple of exceptions, but reflecting their expectations, uh, on cost, uh, for their departments, uh, both operations as well as maintenance, uh, and their, uh, requests for cap, CapExs. And we won't be able to really make decisions, uh, I, I don't, I don't think the board will have enough information uh, to make any decisions on the CapEx requests until we actually are setting down the full bone budget, which, budget, which is two thousand lines long, uh, and be able to say, okay, this is what each individual enterprise, uh, the fund beginning and ending balance looks like, this is what the O and M costs are, uh, here's what they want to spend on CapEx, and this is the bottom line on each enterprise fund in each department, if you will. Uh, and then you'll be able to make the decisions that need be made, uh, for the next fiscal year, and I apologize, it's not done, it's just.
I'd rather it be right.
When you've got two years of the data that you have to catch up on, and, and you're trying to get everything allocated to the correct fund, whether it's a debit or a receipt, it, it's very time-consuming, and any of you that have spent, uh, any time up, uh, up, up at City Hall, uh, knows that it's, it's a pretty busy place, uh, particularly, particularly two, two and a half weeks out of the month are just very, very hectic, uh, with, with, with utilities, so that's where we're at, we're about four weeks out, uh, if, if we have anything that is, uh, felt to be good enough to share with you, at the next meeting, we will get it to you prior to that meeting. Uh, you, do you all have, and I apologize if this sounds silly, do you all have the ability to, uh, to utilize Excel files at home?
Yep.
Or in your office, where you can utilize these very well, you'll receive them in Excel, Excel file format, and most likely, you will see, uh, a comparison between twenty, uh, twenty-one fiscal, twenty-two fiscal, twenty-three, wherever we are at, at that point in time, and, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, that's twenty-three, twenty-four, by the way, twenty-four ending, uh, and where, where we think we're gonna be at, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five. So it's gonna be a lot of information, but, uh, I haven't yet decided whether it's beneficial to see, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and see the trend line, uh, or if you want it in a different format, we'll have those discussions, I, I hope that answers your question.
So was it, you said approximately four weeks, I'm not gonna hold you on that, I mean, if, if you can't, that's great, I get it. But the department heads have given you something in writing?
Yes.
Have you had an opportunity to meet with them, or will you meet with them?
I have talked to them individually.
Okay.
Uh, there was a question, I will, I, I will, I will lay this out there for you, uh, I was asked, uh, was I going to have a department head meeting? And my response to that question was, not at this time, because I did not see the value in bringing all the different department heads together, including people services, and sat in a room, and then discuss individual department budgets, while everyone else was there, listening to that, when I could do it one-on-one, and then if, if, if there becomes a need to bring them all together and, and sit down and review some aspects of the budget, then we will. then we will. But I didn't see the value in bringing everybody together, as has been done traditionally, and, and sitting down and having a two or three hour meeting when I know darn well some of the guys are going, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up, I wanna get to mind, and I've got other things I gotta do. Uh, that's what I did and, and if you, you know, if you wanna do it differently, I'll be glad to.
Makes sense.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Darn. Okay. I, I'm going to make an exception tonight to our rules and then I'm going to ask a question. Is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to address the board?
Look at you go. Isn't it?
Okay, here, here's what has to happen, okay? If we, 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 this board decided that we would actually follow ordinances. And the order says that in order from a member of the gallery who's not on the authorized guest speaker list prior to the meeting, you must be recognized by a member of the board and the majority of the board has to approve you addressing them, they're the board.
I'll make a motion, we'll let Ms. Kathy speak.
We have a motion on the floor to let Kathy speak, do we have a second? We have a motion second on the floor to allow Kathy to address the board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Kathy, you may address the board, please step forward.
I gotta speak up here, so I, I can hear.
Please step up here.
Why do we have, I ain't trying to get none city boys in the jail, why do we have to do a site plan on commercial properties, that commercial properties, that's how it's built, where we're putting shit at? And back me and John Lloyd put most of these water meters in back in the day. Everything from the meter to the line used to be on the city, now all that's getting pushed on custom. Why is that?
George, do you have a question, answer on a line part, you have, you have my water line?
I didn't understand his question. Like, so what we just?
Just go by one thing at a time, the site plan. Everybody told us that we shouldn't have had to do the site plan because it was already commercial property, but they made us do it. And we just. I mean, ever since July, I've been trying to get my place back open and I just keep going through hoops and hoops and.
All, all I know is that, uh, in order for whatever improvements you were making to that property, uh, have to be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's not a committee, it's set by laws, it's back in nineteen eighty-six. And that, that site plan, which involves placement of the building, uh, it involves offsets relative to adjacent property lines. It addresses placement of electric lines, the water lines and the sewer lines. And then there's additional responsibilities that I think you have, depending upon the type of building. I think your building has to be anchored before we're allowed to put in permanent connections for anything. I don't know if I can answer your question.
I mean, we're going by the rules, but it's like.
Yes, yes. This wasn't.
Every time I get one step forward, it, I get knocked back many times.
The only hope, only hope I'm aware of right now was the most recent request for electric service that, that cannot be attached until the building is anchored. If it's anchored, you tell them it's anchored, they come look at it, they look at the anchor, they hook you up, end of, end of question for that. Uh, I was told that someone had advised that you shouldn't have to do that, that someone should have came with you to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and told them why they didn't need to do that, because as far as I know, you're doing it by the book. And that's all I know.
Why would that two aldermen come to us, past alderman said that, that's commercial property for how many years?
I would suggest you direct them to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask them that question. I can't answer it. I can't answer why two people would tell you you didn't have to do a site plan.
Well, I can see if we're just starting out, we've been in business for eleven years here in Monroe.
Different location.
What?
Different location.
But still commercial property. They said we had to do it 'cause it wasn't commercial property.
But the Planning and Zoning approved everything, haven't they?
Planning and Zoning approved everything you brought up there.
So, what, what is, what does she needs to do? Do we know what the final step is?
Well, I know right now, I'm just waiting for them to dig my gas line and hook up Terry. Terry came over today and told us that we had to get a what kind of box?
Through the meter box.
The meter box, which, I didn't know that. So, you know, we went around and we got that and.
We just wanna get over it.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
I want you to be.
We don't wanna be an obstacle, we wanna be the front that's pushing along going forward.
It's like, when I get one step ahead, like, I didn't know I had to re, have to have that meter box. I would've had it if I knew I had to have it. Just stuff like that. I have to keep going back, getting things that they want me to get that I didn't know I had to have.
Yeah.
My management's code.
Well, there's, you know, I gotta be real careful, okay? But, um, I thought that there was some documents that actually had boxes that you had to, that our building inspector had to, had to check off, and he, he's left, so I can't, I can't address that. Look, all I can tell you is this. If, if you, if you tell me that, that you're waiting on, waiting on us to do something.
Understand.
Okay.
Everything that I actually have to have to get this rolling so I can just do it all in one swat.
It sounds, it sounds like the, the correct amount of information maybe, may not have been provided to you early on in this project. I, I, I understand that, I, I wish I could speak to it intelligently, I can't.
Who can she speak with?
It would be, it would have to be, it would have to be Carrie Lee.
Okay.
So, if somebody was in their position when they came up and applied for the licensing, are they given a copy maybe of the checklist?
Well, that's what I was just attempting to refer to, the packet that I've looked at. And God, I can't, I can't tell you exactly what I've read, what I've seen, but there is a packet. And you'd think the packet would, would contain that information.
It needs.
You're, Alex is kinda making faces that it's not maybe real definitive?
It's not very definitive, I think it's one of those things that is just kinda aged out, ancient to be outdated.
But there is something I don't think we're considering, uh, and I just, just nail current, believe it or not. Now, most of those packets are designed for contractors or engineering firms. They're not, they're not really well designed for. If Ronnie wants to build his own house, okay, uh, I wanna be my own contractor. I would have to go through some hoops and probably learn a lot that if I was a contractor by trade or an engineering firm like, you know, like Hutcheson, uh, by trade, I would, I would know all those answers. I think that may be a part of this, because they are very well designed for contractors. We know, you know, they know a lot of this stuff, just because it's what they do.
We need to make it easier for businesses to be businesses, so.
Well, I don't, I don't object to that at all.
I mean, it's hard for, if a business wants to come here.
You know, the, the orders are pretty, the orders are pretty generic.
Yeah.
Uh, they were, they're, the orders have referred to bulk of codes and a whole bunch of other stuff that the state requires. Uh, I don't, you know, that's all I know.
But that doesn't mean bulk of codes don't mean anything to Kathy.
I know.
If we just had a checklist that said, okay, you're starting a new business in your own commercial property, this, 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 this. If it's not being zone commercial or.
Well, then I tell you what I would do, I would recommend that we get that on the agenda for the administrative committee to, to attack and determine what should be written down and how it should be handled.
That's fine.
And get that to the board.
Or the P and Z, I don't, I don't care, who does it, somebody.
Yes.
I mean, I can see if we're just starting out, but we've been in business for a long time. We think, we all about Monroe City, I mean.
Right.
How you doing, Amy?
Good, how are you?
So, is, you don't?
You gotta get over to your boy, you gotta pay boat.
Is there something you need us to help you with?
No, um, I just, I just wanted to get spanked to me a little bit better than.
I don't think we helped you. I don't think we.
We didn't help you, I'm sorry.
I don't think we explained anything.
Our system is lacking the private paperwork for the people to complete it easily.
Can Carrie Lee meet with Kathy to say, here's, here's what I need, here's what I don't need, you're good to go?
When I talk to him, he'll say, okay, well, you're gonna have to have this. And then the next time I see you, well, you're gonna have to have this.
Okay, so I think the conversation should be Carrie Lee.
It's like.
Explain to Kathy everything that she has left to do and when it needs to be done. She wants to open her business.
Give her, give you the whole punch list.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can be prepared and go ahead and get it.
'Cause I sure hate that we've been an obstacle for this, but.
City employees do thank you for the chicken last week, thank you very much.
I'm thinking some of us missed out.
I haven't.
I was, I was at a funeral, so I didn't get some either.
I haven't eaten yet.
Alex, have you got that minutes? Punch list for Carrie.
Okay, and, and then we're gonna have Carrie maybe catch up with Kathy to make sure that she understands maybe what happens next.
Sure.
Or what she needs to do.
Sure.
I think that probably was your request, right?
I think, I think, I think Carrie will be able to put something together, it's.
I mean, it, I would be a plus to come in there and clean the lot up, looks helluva better, yeah.
Boy, does it ever.
It looks nice.
Does it ever.
Yeah.
Sure does.
Okay.
And I just, you know, I wanna stay here in Monroe.
We want to, yeah, we don't need. Stay, stay.
Well, I like, I like that there are businesses opening back up on that side street.
Yeah, yeah.
As I talked about there the other day.
And right next to the dog groomer, so.
And I was with her Monday.
They can pick up their dog and pick up their, their lunch.
Well, hopefully they'll have like pup cups soon.
We'll, we'll get Carrie tomorrow and see if she can put something together, kind of.
And we can try and get Carrie in trouble, we're headed by the, by the city boys.
I really, I really think, you know, I'm glad we had this talk.
Me too.
Because I think it, 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 uh, it highlights an area that we probably haven't spent any time on and that is, uh, it, it's probably what we have is great for a contractor or great for an engineering firm, but maybe not so good for, um, someone who's doing what you're doing. I, I don't have to say that.
And I know they're probably harder, Carrie. Hello, this is Kathy.
Keep calling.
Well, I know, I know that's something that they've been kinda talking about anyway. I know, uh, as far as like the building inspector setup and stuff that we have.
Right.
You know, we've been talking about making that a, a little bit different arrangement of position instead of just one of the duties that's kind of.
Yeah, and, and I tell you, I tell you, 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 I didn't really wanna get into this.
He has a different job that we're going besides that.
The, uh, the fee structure for the billing permits, okay? Provides the revenue to, uh, help employ a, a building inspector, that, that's what it's for. And we're not the only city that has a difficult time justifying a sixty thousand dollar a year position.
It's not full-time.
Because, well, and, and that's the problem, finding someone that will do it part-time.
But it could be if we partnered up with our peasants.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
Rusty?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't, I haven't, I haven't had a talk with him about that. And one reason why, I, I need to find out what their, they have a different, they're a, they're charter city and they have a different setup for their, uh, for their building inspector.
Tomorrow night's the mayor's cup.
I'm sorry, what?
Isn't tomorrow night the mayor's cup?
I'm coming.
Tomorrow night's the mayor's cup and, uh, I will, I will, I will go dressed appropriately for a panther and do my job.
You're gonna wear orange.
You think it'd be a good time to talk to him about that?
Maybe.
I'll see him when I pull up in the orange four-wheeler.
Uh, but, please note, please note within your meeting minutes that I will be contacting, uh, the city of Palmar to discuss the, uh, building commissioner slash building inspector position.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other unfinished business? If not, at this time, we need a motion and a voice vote to go into closed section, executive session. Pursuant to RSMO six one zero point zero two one, three, hiring, firing, discipline or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded and, one, legal actions, causes of action of litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged, privileged communications between a public governmental body and/or its representatives and attorney, I would entertain a motion.
I will make said motion, uh, for the executive session.
I have a motion on the floor to go into executive closed session, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second on the floor to go into closed section according to RSMO six one zero point zero two one. All in favor, please say yes.
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 You have to do it by person. Are you gonna do it or do you want me to do it?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 You have to record those. Okay, we're now in executive session. Uh, please ask those members within the gallery who are not scheduled to be in a session to please take your leave.